I have your attention please at 6:30. We'll go ahead and start our city council workshop. First item of business today is I want to make a proclamation to the Daughters of the American Revolution, so Ms. Suzie Hopeham could come up front.
Yes, I am.
It's my privilege as city mayor to read this proclamation. And it states, whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution is a service organization in which each member is a lineal descendant of a patriot who gave aid or served as a soldier of the American Revolutionary War, and whereas the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, known as the General William Lenore Chapter, was organized ninety-four years ago on October fifteenth, nineteen twenty-five, and is a proud member of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, and whereas as the year twenty twenty will mark the one-hundredth anniversary of women's suffrage in Tennessee, the General William Lenore Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution desired to celebrate the Tennessee Women's Suffrage Centennial, and whereas women's suffrage in the United States of America, the legal right of women to vote, was established over the course of more than half a century, first in various states and localities, sometimes on a limited basis, and then nationally on August eighteenth, nineteen twenty, after a series of votes in the United States Congress and in state legislatures made the Nineteenth Amendment part of the U.S. Constitution. And whereas the Nineteenth Amendment states, "The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex," and after a passage by the Tennessee Legislature, Tennessee's Governor Albert H. Roberts ratified the Nineteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution on August twenty-fourth, nineteen twenty, and whereas the General William Lenore Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution wished to celebrate the Tennessee Women's Suffrage Centennial together with its ninety-fourth anniversary of its founding at its anniversary high tea on October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, and therefore I, Jeff Harris, Mayor of Loudoun, hereby proclaim this October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, as Tennessee Women's Suffrage Centennial and General William Lenore Chapter ninety-fourth anniversary high tea day, and hereby call upon all the good citizens of Loudoun thereof to render support to the members of this organization and to make themselves aware of the Daughters of the American Revolution, whose members this day are providing meaningful volunteer service to communities here and throughout our country. A witness thereof, I appear unto, set my hand and cause a seal to the City of Loudoun, Tennessee, to be affixed on this the fourteenth day of October, twenty nineteen.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Anything you want to say?
Just now. Tomorrow at high noon, our ladies will be gathering at the fountain on Rose Street, and we're marching from the fountain up to the historic Loudoun Theater. And the mayor has already asked our wonderful police department to cordon off the area so we can do that. So I really appreciate the town for doing this. The Regals at the Historic Loudoun Theater have done a wonderful job of renovating our wonderful theater, and they're working so hard with us to have this tea tomorrow. So if you're in the area, come down and support us and support our town. It's such a wonderful place to live, and I can't thank everybody for supporting this wonderful historic time for us. And thank you, Mayor, for doing this work. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Next item of business is Loudoun County Courthouse potential location. Mayor Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mayor Harris, City Council, Mayor Gerald Ross. The, I gave the Saints built the LUB workshop earlier, the, of course, the land riverside now is kind of off the table some would speak pertaining to the second annex. Again, the county as a whole, we are so grateful with just the entertainment of that side. And we are still looking for sites, potential new sites. Not asking for any immediate commitment or anything, but we're certainly open. Bottom line is we've got to have more court space, more courtrooms, and there is a little bit of a movement to potentially move to the Justice Center now. I'm not for that. I don't think majority commission's for that. I know means. I don't think the votes are there for that to actually happen, but in five years, I'm learning to never say never. The, we've got some other potential plans in place, and I'm thinking they're exactly as ideal as that site was, and I wish everything hadn't happened and played out the way it did play out. Any other sites that y'all would be willing to entertain, we would certainly be grateful and be willing to sit down and talk with. And so I'm not looking for a commitment, just if y'all would want to have that discussion, and we would certainly appreciate it, then maybe then, since we figure all this out and all unvotes, we'll find the perfect spot.
Any questions for Mayor Bradshaw? He said he'd have the same facility utility board, who basically has the Hutch property.
And said, we're looking at a twenty thousand square foot facility, and so, and one thing we did talk about, talked with several members of the DA's office as well, one of the things that, we have several, a pretty good percentage of our jail, people in our jail, rather, are waiting on trial. And so, top of the DA's office as well as several judges, we would have more trials inside of Loudoun, and if we had courtroom space. Of course, we run the district, we run four different courts out of one courtroom. We've got to run that as a county. I think we're going to be closer to sixty thousand than we are fifty thousand this census gets done, with that comes crime and inmates. And so, that's going to be our goal. We're going to, we want it to be a nice building as well. It's going to be something nice, something complimentary to the City of Loudoun as well, and something that the whole county can be proud of.
I want to thank Mayor Bradshaw for his commitment to keeping it downtown Loudoun. He's adamant about that, shared that with me personally and publicly here, so.
You too. What I would like to see, this is the old city hall, because we built it in this area. Do you have that picture from Asheville?
Yes.
Just picture behind the old city hall apart lot.
Yeah, we discussed that, said this morning, Mayor Bradshaw has a potential.
It would be, it would be a nice location. It'd look good coming across the bridge. You have a courtyard in front of.
I did have the privilege of meeting with Mayor Bradshaw this morning and discussing this topic, and the one request that I made is that the courthouse side ultimately be complementary to the surrounding properties. Downtown is a place of tremendous character, and what goes around with the courthouse is just as much important as the courthouse itself. And I've brought before you an example that I've seen in my travels, which is Asheville, North Carolina. And pictured here is the Asheville Courthouse. Of course, Asheville and the county itself is a larger community than Loudoun, hence the multi-stories. We would not have as many stories in Loudoun, obviously, but what attracts the eye and what attracts visitors is a linear park that extends out from the courthouse there in Asheville. This could be a linear park that makes that connection to the waterfront in some way, shape, or form, and is complementary to the other investors that we would have at the Hutch property.
Can you talk about the more frequent court next to that? That's the foot traffic. That's important to the vendors and restaurants and all the businesses downtown as well.
I think it's certainly an option we can entertain at the utility board, I'm sure.
Awesome. Well, obviously, it's not like we have to know, we're pushing for a decision. We are at Gerald's mercy, certainly, if that's something y'all like to entertain, and we're going to, we're going to do it right. And so, we're not in a hurry to rush, and so I think we do it right, and I think it will be something both county and city can do.
If you do have the money allocated, really good.
Yes, yes.
So what would be the process moving forward? That, of course, the Hutch property is utility property, so we have to get their blessing on that. I know you had a meeting with them, you were at their meeting earlier, but I guess we need to have maybe some utilities and some cities. Do you have your meetings to answer any questions, or?
Well, whatever the utilities and city decides, well, this is something that you all would like to entertain and move forward with, we can get some, of course, we've got some rough drafts already, just from everything that was down there. MBI is ready to, ready to go. I talked to them, when they said any questions that the city or utilities or the county may have, they'd be more willing to ask, or be more willing to answer. And so, at that point, we would start some preliminaries, and once we, once we're set and we're ready, I don't want, I just don't want it to be like a jail expansion. I don't want us scrambling eighteen months of work in a little bit under four years. And so, that, and that's exactly what we did up there, but I want it done right, too. So.
I think MBI is a good place to start, but.
Could you get MBI to just look at the place and look at the vision we're having?
Oh, absolutely.
Go ahead and do some rough drawing?
Yeah, they'd be glad to.
With the courtyard, nine yards.
That's one thing I talked to Jay Indalite and Dave Mallock this morning, and they were just, you know, like they always are, whatever they can do.
Give us a good visual, anyway.
I mean, I think, my personal opinion, as far as location, that's a great location, adjacent to your other offices.
Now, you'd have, pretty much, with the exception of my office and everything underneath it, you'd have your, of your fee office collections in your, as well as your court within a kind of a two-block radius right there. And so, I think that would be handy. At the same time, it's, there's not a lot of earth to be moved as far as site prep as well, and it's kind of a natural decline, incline right there, and one thing we talked about is salary board for safety, when it comes to transport bridges to in front of court. And so, I think that, you know, I think it is a good size. Of course, that's ultimately up to you, all the utilities. You know, we looked at even talking in discussions about the Justice Center itself. I talked to Jay this morning, and he said, yeah, you can do it at Justice Center if you plan on building a four-story underground garage and put another seven or eight million dollars on it, is only with that site's inviolable. So I said, the top's there, but I don't think it's viable, and again, this is our county seat, and this is where it belongs.
Any other questions for Mayor Bradshaw?
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is citizens' input. Is anyone here that would like to address the council? Please come forward and state your name.
I'm Sarah Simpson-Davidson, and I know it sounds like it's just already decided that you're going to build a new courthouse, where what I'm hearing, among most of the citizens, is that we have a perfectly good courthouse, or had a perfectly good courthouse, and I don't know why we, how many feet, Mayor Bradshaw?
Twenty.
And, you know, I guess I don't understand that, because the judges conduct the courts. No matter how much room you have, you're not going to have a court until the judge is there, and they rotate around. And I know that, I don't know why they're so interested in a big new building, because, you know, we're here all the time, and they're here just part of the time holding court. And I was a journalist for many years, and I've been in a lot of courthouses covering court cases, and most of the time, there aren't that many people in there. There's, most of the suits, they're channeled, you know, people sue each other, and there's a jury, a judge, and defendants, and prosecutors, and there's not that many people. So it just, it bothers my mind why you need that many feet of, you know, new building. And I guess I just don't understand the cost, why you're going to build a new one when, you know, we're going to restore the old one, and it seems to me we still have court there. I just wanted to say that.
Well, appreciate your comments. That's really not a decision on our path, nothing we can do about that. That's a county commission. We appreciate your comment. Anyone else have a comment? Okay, we'll move on. Next item is Riverwalk Tap Engineering Services.
Yes, this council will recall contracting with Thompson Engineering for the dredge study in connection with Appalachian Regional Commission grant. We do have another grant impacting the downtown waterfront, and that's a Riverwalk grant from TDOT, and through a committee made up of Mark Carroll, Nicole Curtis, Jack Walls, and myself. We have a engineering firm to recommend to this body. It's Los Design, they have an office in Knoxville, and we met with TDOT, and we all became intimately familiar with the flow chart of everything that TDOT requires in order for a project to meet all of its requirements. And we met, we had a pre-kickoff meeting to go over the flow chart with Los Design to make sure that they were aware of all the requirements. In so doing, we got into some details of the project, or some potential details of the project. One potential detail is a pedestrian bridge that would, that interact with the Riverwalk at some point, whether that be the marina or wherever. A pedestrian bridge does cost a lot of money, and this grant has capped at a million dollars in participation from the state. We asked for more money. We said that there was not any money available this year, but we could apply for the next grant cycle. That grant cycle is due next week. And in cooperation with Los and the East Tennessee District, we did submit a timely application, and so we've asked for an additional million dollars. We are hopeful that our application will be entertained and accepted, and we appreciate Los's help with that. It was certainly in their interest, and all interests were aligned, getting everything submitted timely, and so we'll report back to you with the results of that. The long and the short of it is, is it split the project into phase one and phase two. Phase one will be the initial grant award. Phase two will be this second grant award if we're successful. And so, we will bring to you a performance contract once we get everything lined up with TDOT that you've already budgeted for, and it'll be sent on to the presentation now with Thompson. But again, this is Los and for the Riverwalk.
What is the breakdown of that second grant? Is it eighty, twenty?
Yes, it's eighty, twenty. One, the preliminary engineering and design is not reimbursable. That's why we budgeted for it this year.
How do you spell that engineering?
L-O-S-E, or it's pronounced Los.
Let's hope that comes through. I said it was a crunch time to get all that paperwork and everything submitted, but everybody rallied around, the staff got that submitted on time, so appreciate everybody's efforts on that. Any questions about the additional grant from this engineering firm? Okay, second item is Williamson House, the Van Dusco proposal.
Yes. Chris Frye and I did meet with the principal of the Van Dusco Company, and we're working towards an agreement between the city and the company for a in-kind service in exchange of real property, that real property being Williamson House. And Chris can update you as to that progress.
I'm just putting finishing touches on that contract, and we'll be sending it over to them to see if they have any comments before we bring it back in for a vote. There will have a, will have a personal guarantee component that, that way, if, for whatever reason, the city is not able to use those services, we have a personal guarantee, and there's also going to be a clause in there that extends beyond three years, that if we have not used the entire hundred and fifty thousand dollars within the three years, which was in the RFP, that we can extend it for successive years.
Are you going to give that to him this week?
Yes.
That's a good step. Okay, thanks, Chris. Any other questions about that? Okay, next item, outdoor warning siren system.
Yes, this is follow-up from prior council meeting. Councilmember Vividens helped form a committee. That committee has met with Chip Lynn, the membership of the committee being our public safety chiefs, myself, and Councilmember Vividens. Chief Webb, after learning some background on this project, did some personal investigation in Sweetwater, and has found a system that we think can work well here in Loudoun, and we're just continuing to follow up on the information we received from Sweetwater, but I will have to have a recommendation in place soon.
Okay. Chief Webb, is there anything you need to update us on this point?
No, I would like to say something that, I feel bad about this, I wasn't aware of it. Whenever I spoke with folks in Sweetwater, one thing they rely heavily on, and they have tried to inform the folks there in Sweetwater, too, there is an existing service that we have also, it's called Hyperreach through our 911 center. And if you go to LoudounCounty911.org, you can sign your phones, cell phones, home phones, or whatever, up to this Hyperreach system, and whenever there are weather alerts or disaster alerts, what the city of Sweetwater has done, they do have a siren system for disasters in place, and what they try to do is, they use social media and try to make a big media event out of the annual testing of the siren system, and they promote their Hyperreach, and that's worked out really well. And they said that they're even able to use it, our system can do this, too, by the way. Whenever they need to pave streets, they can send messages out to the folks that say, "Live along Highland Avenue, we're going to pave the streets on this date, and, you know, these days, and, you know, make sure that you don't park your cars on the street or whatever, et cetera." And so, I just like to say, that's one thing I would recommend everybody do. In the meantime, while we're working on our disaster alert system, basically, the sirens are really good for folks that are outside that might be away from technology. Out on the ball fields playing ball, out doing gardening, we have one golf course here in the city of Loudoun, and some folks might be out on the golf course, and partially left their cell phones in the car. So the Hyperreach is something that I would encourage everyone to sign up for. I feel bad, I'm on the 911 board, and I'd heard about the Hyperreach system before, wasn't really familiar with it, and after I started investigating this, got familiar with it, I've signed my phones up on the Hyperreach system. I recommend everybody else to do that, too. But, yeah, we're, I think, working in a good, positive direction to try to provide, I'll say this, Sweetwater has five square miles, and they have two of these alert sirens to serve five square miles. We have nine square miles here in the city of Loudoun. And so, Chip and I today went and made a site visit to where we think a good potential third location would be for a third siren.
That's like the other two where they are.
Yes.
Okay, thanks for your work on that. Any questions? Ask Mayor Vividens, do you have anything to add to that?
I know that Hyperreach is what I was going to say, if you're not already signed up, to go ahead and get signed up on that, because that's a great system, but I'd love for us to do, like Sweetwater, because, I mean, with the paving, we learned just recently, you know, people weren't aware, and had some car issues as far as that goes, so that would be a good thing to do for that, so.
Yeah, we had to tow some of them away.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Thanks for your work on that. Next item is court software.
Chief, I'd like to stay with you for the next two items, court software as well as the Turkey Shoot fundraiser. Can you start with courtware?
Yeah, I could really talk about this for a long time, so I'm going to be as brief as I can.
Thank you.
And, we, in the police department, we are way behind times with regards to technology. Our municipal court is all paper, and then also, basically, our records management system is all paper. And I have been doing some research since May to try to find vendors that could provide us with software to manage our court system, and I found a vendor that can provide us with court software and also records management software for the police department, too. And so, right now, I've just been working with Nicole Curtis and working with our IT person, Steve Fritz, and the folks in my staff, and just today, we have an agreement that we'd like to enter into at some point in time around shooting for the first of the year, but I forwarded it on to our attorney, Chris Frye, to look over the agreement, make sure all the legalese are good with it. I feel very positive it'll make our department more efficient to serve the public when we do this.
Nicole, what do you think about it?
I think it is much needed and look forward to implementing this program.
You see the benefits of it as well?
Absolutely. We actually met with our, especially with, we have different facilities throughout the city, and so we go and create communications all the way around, from customer service and city services, building here and accounting and down to the police department. It's a great system.
How does it enhance our court system? You've lost.
Well, first of all, it's going to organize. Right now, when an officer writes a citation, that piece of paper is just passed around and through so many hands. We don't really have a docket so much as the municipal court clerk just keeps that in a, like an expandable file that she has for certain dates for court. And probably the biggest thing that it's going to help us with, as Nicole touched on a little bit, is customer service. Right now, we write Tim Brewster a citation for speeding, and you just want to go up there and pay it and get it out of the way. It takes days for that information to get over here to this customer service center for them to have that citation ready for you to pay. And so, like I said, it'll make us more efficient all the way around.
So the laptop in the patrol cars would be networked with customer service?
When we get that far, well, I mean, that's my dream, we get those laptops in the car.
It takes two or three.
Yeah, right now, we've got to get the software, and so this will be an initiative to get to that point where we'll have the laptops in the car.
Tell them, explain how someone could go try to pay a fine, and they say, fine was so much, I don't know if the judge reduced it, or?
Well, what happens is, on the day that we have municipal court, they hold municipal court in here, and the judge may, you know, the fine and cost may be a hundred and eighteen dollars, but for some reason, the judge thought this person was disarguing of a break, and he wanted to give them a fifty-dollar fine. Well, the girls over here, all they've got is a fine schedule to go by, and somebody walks in there and says, hey, the judge told me I only had to pay fifty dollars. We don't have that communication between here and there, just next door. And so, now, our municipal court clerk will be able to make the postings that will act immediately, so when the girls over there pull it up, they'll say, oh, yeah, well, here's your fine, it's fifty dollars.
Good idea.
Yeah, it ties that together.
I work with the municipal court, trying to find the citation.
This would then all be accurate to the minute, basically?
Yeah, it'd be up to the minute.
Any other questions about that? Okay, we'll go right into the Turkey Shoot. Chief Webb, you're still on deck.
This is an annual event that the police department and the fire department do to raise money for the Dicky Children's Christmas Fund. And since we are allowing private citizens to discharge firearms in the city limits, we always feel like it is appropriate customary to come and ask the city council to, I guess, pass a resolution that will allow them to discharge the firearms in city limits under our supervision.
Okay. Any questions about that? So that'll be on the agenda for us to approve. Okay, next item is Friday People Festival recap, Mark Carroll.
Well, I don't know if I'm qualified to talk about this totally tonight. Chief Webb, if he hasn't known, his kind of talking about the Turkey Shoot, he could have offered a little explanation, and Chief Rubaker, but it was a day to remember. We had a, probably a guest amount of around eight thousand people hang to the event, and I don't know if it was probably eight thousand people couldn't get to the event, but it's the largest crowd we've ever experienced in Loudoun Police Department. Probably the most fun we've had there in several years. But we've got a lot of work to do, we want to continue to do this festival. I mean, it's a logistic nightmare. There's some issues there that we're gonna have to work out. It's a thing to, tend to bring back to Loudoun. And we also gotta remember, I guess, on the negative side, if we were to have three or four or five of these type events at the top of the park and allow the wear and tear that we had from this one event, our park wouldn't last very long. So, some logistics to work out. We've all met and we've all talked about it and I think she's already prepared for 2020. She has not met with myself yet about that. I think we can work it out, but again, we're gonna have to do some off-site parking and kind of have some restrictions. She said she had over 200 vendors. I got there right at 10 o'clock when it started. I had staff there up until 5:30 morning till about 8 that night. So, I think Jeff had already done the opening ceremony there. We went to the St. Jude fundraiser before we got there. I was thinking, I would just pull right into the park right at the ceremony time at 10 o'clock. I think Dennis only lived about 800 yards from the park, but we could walk there. There were people that tell us that they left the St. Jude telethon two and a half hours and it had taken them to get here. Half of the interstate, 75 and get into the park. So, we gotta think about that. And it's great, other than, you know, logistics.
Well, Chief Webb and Chief Rubaker, you had a meeting with your officers, a debriefing. So, some of those issues, a lot of issues were brought up and, you know, plans to correct a lot of that.
The biggest comment I would add is if they've got plans to correct that, we're gonna park the car. I mean, you can't compete with parking all over the park like that.
Yeah, Shuttles talked about a lot of things that was discussed. It's gonna take some more planning. Hey, I think our guys did a great job, thumbed into it, just like, oh, we didn't know what to expect. And they reacted very well.
Hey, Bark and I talked about some major concepts to introduce to the event sponsor next year. Increased rent, for one. Shuttle parking, kind of using the Atlanta Braves as a model. I don't know if you've been to SunTrust Park or not, but there's no parking around SunTrust Stadium. All parking is spread throughout the surrounding neighborhoods. And so, we may have to tackle it in a same manner.
I think, you know, we've talked about a pedestrian bridge and, you know, if you add something like that, that would certainly, that would situation some of things with some of the distance being by the wall.
Well, we currently have 400 parking places. Then we have some off-site parking and then we accommodate probably another 600. We were probably offering close to 1,700 spots per park and they were full. And if you do the math, there's 2.5 industry standards, 2.5 per car. Most of those cars were at least, or those places were full at least twice. So, you know, these guys, I'm sure we wore out this point. If they didn't direct traffic, they were swamping in the direction they were going to. So, an extra entrance would help alleviate some of that. But again, we gotta, I'll say this in a hush, we gotta think about the mission of the park. Is this what the park was built for? And, you know, as I look at surrounding communities, why do they not use their parks for these type of things? And that's one of the reasons they don't. They build parks like to have a park, annual fairs and parks and things like that. But, you know, aesthetically, they're a little rough on parks. So, there's, you know, an off-site parking like that. We could have filled, I even offered this to Chief Webb, he and I haven't been so offended about it. I'd offered parking up on the hillside in the amphitheater because I was so anxious to get people in there as well. And then, he didn't understand what I was talking about, but I'm glad he did. Because then, if people sent, and if it rained, we had some, you know, some other problems that were a bit real hard on the park. So, again, it's a great start of law thinking. As Todd said, we looked at it real, real close. We need to make this park a business that we can to kind of patch out some of this stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Next item is vehicle replacement program. This is still falls under Mark's.
This is the, you know, the former government, it would replace the programs. This is a van used on a bus.
To even trade, swap out? Any questions for council on that? Okay, next item is Director Ellis Grubbs, Public Works Department equipment purchases.
There's quite a list here, Ellis, if you'd like to come up to the podium. It's straightforward, but there still might be some questions.
Okay, I got a couple pieces of equipment here. They're all in our street department capital budget. What they are is kind of in the trend of expanding our public works department, getting the capability, ability to do these other tasks, so getting the equipment to be able to do it. What you'll see is a couple of different options for a mini excavator and some different bucket sizes, as well as an option for a hydraulic ram. Rather than using a manual jack hammer, attach kind of a hydraulic ram to the attachment. Based on these different options, you know, my recommendation was the case just because that's the same machine the utilities has. We've actually used it, it's been pretty, very well for us. The only thing is there has been some discussion whether it's big enough. That's some things we'll have to probably iron out before we decide when we're going in a specific direction. But if we decide one of these three, that'd be my recommendation.
So, you don't need the 24-inch bucket, you don't think, or the 18-inch?
I would definitely recommend the 12 and the 24 for sure. The 18 is kind of an optional.
Because I know they didn't quote that one.
Correct. The other option was the trailer. I've got two options here. That is the can superline, that's the same trailer the utilities uses. The other is the 2020 Gator made, that's actually great outlaw trailers in Loudoun. That's my recommendation, not just because of the price, it's actually a better looking trailer.
Yeah, I know, local, I think anytime we can do that, we should do that.
Next piece of equipment is a snowplow. This basically conjuncts off the vehicle we bought last year, the F-250. That's so we can use that vehicle for snowplowing and retire all that 250 that's dilapidated. And we've got two quotes here. I tried to get a third, it was unsuccessful. But I'd like to go with local, that's an eight-foot snowdug plow.
Still under budget?
Still under budget, yes, that's correct. And then lastly, is a service truck. And basically, because we've expanded our skilled labors, we're running out of vehicles for these guys to do their work. So, that'd be an F-250 with a service bed and that would be part of the annual vehicle replacement program.
Again, it's under budget.
That's correct.
Our public works has really started doing public works type work. They can't do it if we don't get them to do it.
And it's just been years and years of lack of buying equipment that he's trying to cover from.
It'll take time.
That's right. It's certainly in the right direction. They gotta have equipment, like you said, to do the work expected to do, so.
That's correct.
Any questions for Director Ellis? I think it's a very extensive list and a lot of work went into that.
Is all this equipment in stock?
For the most part, yes. I'd say the service truck is probably the longest late time item.
And next two items are also public works, surplus bucket truck.
Yes, what that is, at our previous council meeting, we actually purchased the bucket truck from utilities. What this is, is a surplusing the previous bucket truck that we used. Long story short, we didn't see the purpose, the reasoning for investing the money to rehab it. So, rather, we just wanna go ahead and put it on surplus and clear up the space in our parking lot.
Just wanna put on good deals, see what you get. Okay, any questions about that? Okay, next item, I think, is Director Grubbs, commercial garbage service.
Sure, just to give you a bit of a preview, it is October and we promised to have an update on commercial waste service or at least our investigation of this service and how we can perform it in the future. Ellis has done some investigation, reaching out to other commercial service providers and he has a report on his findings.
Okay, long story short, we talked about either performing, continuing to perform the service in-house or contracting it out. What we looked at, in-house costs, long story short, just some of all our internal costs. That includes the five-year amortization of a new pork truck, as well as the landfill costs, personnel costs and maintenance costs associated with the dumpsters. That puts us at about $185,000 annually. Just a rough number, but that's, you know, a pretty good estimate. For contracting out, to get that same level of service, is looking at about $210,000 a year.
$185, is that, is that counting person there?
Yes. And I was actually quite conservative with my numbers.
And that's factored in a new truck?
Yes.
And amortizing over five years?
Yes, and about $50,000 or more, just like figuring for inflation.
Well, we definitely need a new truck.
That's, yes, that's the other part of this. If we decide to keep going in this direction, a new truck and some dumpsters is paramount.
Was that new truck put in your budget?
It is in the budget, it's in sanitation capital.
Well, we felt like, you know, based on your input from prior meetings, that you wanted some more information. We've done some due diligence, we've come back to you with additional information. We just wanted to check your pulse on it.
Now, is that, that's the price for the dumpsters, they're four yard, six yard, eight yard?
Correct. And we do have $15,000 budgeted for replacement dumpsters as well.
Have you factored in a way where if we did go commercial, where we could make up the $25,000 difference?
There are some different options as far as, and that's, I guess that's the other slide, we wanna go that direction. There's different scenarios. So, if the decision made to investigate commercial further, in order to go up for an RFP, we would have to narrow down what we're looking for. And these are the three options. A would be the contractor builds the customers directly and basically the city no longer provides that service. Option B, the contractor will then submit their invoice to the city. From there, the city will then submit the invoice to the customer. Or option C, the contractor basically builds the city, no expense incurred by the customer.
I wanna go with C, but, you know. What I'm looking at is freeing up
The manpower?
The manpower, because you're short.
Yeah, I'm sure we can get one man.
You mean that?
Yeah, that is about six hours, three days a week.
I just, I don't, personally, I don't see any reason paying someone for this service if we're not, we're not gonna bill the customer for it and we're just incurring more charges on the city doing that. And that cost will go up and they'll increase the cost of doing it. So, I mean, it would eventually come that we would have to do something. Either charge the customer or kick it back up ourselves.
Isn't that your biggest headache in your department? Trash service?
Trash services, yes. It is a very labor-intensive task.
Yeah, not just a commercial?
Not just commercial, residential as well, it is. It's very labor-intensive.
It's the condition of the current truck is a headache?
And right now, the condition of the current truck is a headache. We actually recently had some issues with it.
How often do you get one?
I believe, well, it depends. There was one of them a lot previously. If there's not a chassis, it's not an easy lead time, but it's extended lead time.
Do you know what the cost is?
Yes, I believe you go to the previous slide. The half pack truck motor is $281, we have $295 budgeted.
If you have any in your truck, you gonna go ahead and get new dumpsters?
Yes, we need to get new dumpsters as well.
Do you have a number on the?
What you see here is the price per, I'd probably look at getting
How many can you go?
Probably 10 eights, at least, maybe eight sixes and just a couple fours. We don't have very many fours and sixes.
You've got enough budgeted?
Yes, a couple of that.
What's the four yard? Is it, is it worth buying?
We've got a couple customers that use the four, but there's not been any. I wouldn't buy maybe two or three at most.
Those people could be switched over to the regular, the big garbage cans, I guess, that...
Possibly, something to look at.
I can't see buying four yard dumpsters. Take two garbage cans, that's the same thing.
That's what I was thinking, I mean, the bigger can. I don't know, personally, just, I'd be for buying the truck and dumpsters and continuing to service it, this would be my point.
Yeah, me too. Thank you, Ellis.
What you heard there, Ellis, is a question. I've been working on this and I've been working with you on our work order system. I've talked to Mark. We have to get a work order system in place because you're growing, your department's growing and we've gotta be able to track everything you do and everything you use. So, what I was thinking, Mark's the girl that works front office. If we could come up with a system, if anybody got brush needs picked up or anything dealing with the city, we call into this front office over here. She generates the work order and it goes to you. That way, you don't have to spend a half a day getting voice messages. I think that that's the system we need to go to. Because right now, we're just working off a piece of paper.
Correct.
And I understand you said the system that utilities use.
We started using, I've actually generated a couple C tracks and started that process. It's more just an administrative task. I don't see a lot of output that you're gonna gain from it. It's more administrative output, there's not a lot to gain at this point.
Todd, do you see a benefit of creating a work order for parks and rail going through?
I do see, I do see a benefit of tracking work and I think it's a, it's a strong benefit in terms of customer service, getting, being responsive to the requests. I'm not a big proponent of the local government C track system. And that comes from directors in the utility who find it to be ineffective in terms of tracking work orders. In fact, most often, they work around it in an Excel program.
I've actually got a couple of examples that they look at it, that they would make it. Just so we can see what the printout looks like.
If they have to be a per amount there, they would work for you somewhere.
I've looked at several. Costs is an issue, just giving you a rough number, we're talking probably $15,000 to $18,000 initial purchase price plus a $2,000 to $3,000 annual fee. So, that's one of the holdups right now, I'm just trying to work through that and seeing what our best options are. We go with a third-party application.
Hi, Nicole, have you looked into, because I mean, our systems are way outdated, all of them. I mean, everybody's are outdated. Have you looked into some systems that could possibly include them in it?
That is very much a priority for the accounting finance department. That is absolutely great. Local government, I think it was written in 1983. And I'm not sure that it has had any significant upgrades since then. So, it is character, 32-character type program. We are actively evaluating those software providers, so it definitely doesn't depend on people.
I mean, that might, that might be a cost saving if we had one program. I mean, because public works is part of the city, not just here, but, you know, other locations. So, that could be a cost-saving thing to us.
Absolutely.
It's in our plan to issue an RFP for this type of software and others. We just wanted to get past that in my first.
Sure, yeah, and I'm sure it lines up in our strategic plan as well. It'll be touched on, okay.
But we are looking into getting something in the interim.
In the interim?
Yes.
All right, thanks Ellis.
Thank you.
Order that truck.
Okay, next item, council meeting day.
Yes, at our prior meeting, we discussed the ordinance change that would align council meetings with the second and the fourth week of the month. What we neglected to account for was the difference of December and the holidays. And we just made that change.
Okay. Pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions about that? I don't think that would be an issue. Okay, next item, legal rule.
It's included in your pocket. Item to consider for the personnel rules. It's essentially a grandfather clause. That would apply to section 10, that 10.6.1 post resignation leave. I'll go straight to the italics, which is the amendment that says, "All employees hired prior to December 1st, 2019 shall accumulate additional sick leave, common vacation leave, comma, and holiday pay while on post-resignation leave."
Yeah, this was something that was put in place in 1981, but never has had any theme of black and white in it. And I know they, something put in place sometime last year, but that's taking away from the employees that currently employed, that was the... that was expecting this to be part of their program. And so, I think everyone needs to be grandfathered in. And then when you fall head and make this statement that you want to shut this process out, that you begin at that point. No one hired you on that point, grandfathered me, and we shut it off.
I think this would be better worded as a past practice clause, because there was a policy to grandfather this in, someone cheated the system thirty years ago, and it never got corrected.
We're violating our policy for thirty years or whatever.
So, and I, one thing I would say is not to put bereavement pay.
Yes, that did happen.
That's happened for thirty years.
Bereavement pay.
I do not, do not want it to include bereavement pay.
I think this, it's on, it's gone on this way.
No, but someone, someone has been accruing, drawing this retirement out.
Bereavement pay.
And got bereavement pay while they were, while they were drawn out their leave. I guess my question, first question is, looks like the simplest thing to do is just, instead of letting them continue accruing, why don't we just pay them off? At that, when they, when they turn in their, their retirement papers, we, we write them a check for their unused vacation and write them a check for their sick.
They do have that option.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just, I don't.
That would be an option if you.
The major complaint by the employees, and as much, I mean, they, they understand it, but their complaint was, they continue to accrue sick time, and vacation time.
And cost of living raises.
And cost of living raises.
And they're not, they're not.
They're not there, went back comparing on for up to a year.
I know, and it has.
And it has for thirty years.
So, it would be.
But no, one of them has the same amount.
No, they don't, but our old ones, but they were, they were very much using their time correctly to, to access this the best way.
I just think it's, it's cleaner, when they turn it, here's my, I want to retire August first, and we'd, we'd buy you out of everything, and then.
That would work.
You're, you're finished.
It'd be easier on our bookkeeping, wouldn't it?
You're, you're off the payroll, you're off.
Well, we're double paying. I mean, if somebody retires, we have to hire somebody else in, and we're still.
And we're still streaming that out for thirteen, fourteen months.
Would it be easier on you just pay them off?
I mean, I thought it's.
I mean, I was just sharing with Mark that that, that could put the employee in a different tax situation. It's still, it has.
Certainly could, you know.
That are everybody that retired in January, so that's the impact that you could have from that.
Well, there's no cap on, I mean, the cap on vacation sick is out there. I mean, it's a higher cap than anywhere else.
I mean, they have that option now anyways, as Manager Ross said, they have that option, it just, they could do it that way.
But they don't want to do that way.
Yeah, I can see why, you know, but that really was never supposed to happen. So, as, as I think the discussion in utility board was the same thing, do two wrong to make a right. I mean, because you're actually, people hired after December first, you tell them, they don't get it.
We're making a, we're not making a plan A and a plan B employee.
That's just something you've got, you've got to show the doc.
Yeah, and I think that's the point, it was supposed to shut up in July, when it was found.
And none of your new employees was ever told that they would be receiving this benefit.
Well, I think it was worded in Mount Lehigh.
It actually wasn't told to them through management, told to them through other employees. You know, it's something they expected.
Well, Tim, you'd be in favor of just paying them off and shutting, closing?
Pay them off for what?
Their unused time.
Or unused time? For where they would not accrue anymore?
Yeah, then they're, they're paid off.
Well, there's a way that they can continue to receive a forty-hour a week check, but they don't accrue any more time.
Oh, that's the whole deal, that this whole thing though?
I know.
Yes, that's the thing.
But that's the way it's, it was supposed to be done thirty years ago.
I agree, but, but it's not what they were.
Past practice clause.
I, I'm still in favor of shutting it off at a certain period, and that way you're done with it, for all them new hired employees.
I mean, there's gonna be a, like I said, not everybody's gonna be tapped out on it.
Not everyone, no.
But there's gonna be a cost associated with each one of them.
And you're not gonna have two, five, ten employees retiring all at one time.
No, but you're gonna keep, their, their wage and everything's gonna continue to go up.
Of course.
Would you know off the top of your head what it would cost a thirty-year employee that retired?
I don't have a number to talk about here, but if they did, if they used, they have additional.
Director, what have they?
Yes, sir.
I just took a variable, skilled labor position, maxed out on sick and vacation, and accrued approximately roughly four hundred hours of sick, holiday, vacation time. Their cashed out, their cost would be nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars additional to the tax pay.
It wakes changes.
Yes, sir. They are, I took a police officer, same number, same amount of hours, ten thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars additional cost of the tax pay. And also use a, an executive position from our directors, and that came out about fourteen thousand, seventy dollars.
So, you've taken quite a bit of money.
But they're earning while not working.
Yes, ma'am, that's accruing additional time.
Yes.
If they thought out as far as how much time they've got left.
Yes, sir.
But I was not gonna have that.
Well, you, you said you used, what, four?
I used about four hundred, which is about average for some of our city employees. Past five city employees that have retired, this was the number, that's what you.
Seven of them will have more, some will have less. So, that's, that's just the ballpark. So, several thousand dollars to be thinking about.
I mean, I, I did that, that was a, a great, non-policed benefit that for thirty years people partook in.
But that was the forefathers that we've had that, that overlooked it. Ours, Sea Castle goes, and utility that overlooks.
Well, we have that thing, we have someone in HR, and had he, you know, had it not been implemented, and he kept it going, I mean, that could have cost him his job.
Well, it did.
My, my concern is there's no policy to go back on, for a grandfather.
Practice makes policy.
No, but not here, that can be in court. I mean, I'm not, my goal is not to punish any employees that I know means, but the retirement that, that is actually in the policy is better than most places I have ever seen.
Well, I agree with you, but, but that's something that you didn't put in place here. That's something you're gonna be taking out of place.
Well, nobody put it in place, that's the problem.
Yeah, yeah, at some point in time, it was put in place.
Well, to me, if we think that's the right thing to do, to offer that benefit, then we shouldn't have a cutoff date.
Right.
We should offer it to everybody.
That's a lot.
If we're putting a cutoff date on.
If we think it's the right thing to do.
We're putting a cutoff date on a policy that never existed.
I think it's the right thing to do to grandfather your employees in that you have now, that was, you know, looking to have this opportunity when they die. For the ones that get hired in, they're gonna know that this not gonna be offered yet.
I know the people I work for very well, and what is before you is the product of much discussion, and it's a compromise.
So, when we put, if we put this in place, how many people are retiring?
What is that number you have?
I think probably three on the utility side, maybe right now, or two on the city.
I think there's total employees of like, what, fifty-three for the city?
Yes, yes, sir. We thought about seventy-four already too.
No, that seems to have been placed, that's definitely a time of life.
I, I think, since we didn't do it, but we can make it right, just the way we got Tim's bill on it, just put a cutoff date.
And that's certainly for the council to decide. But I guess one question I wanted to add is, does it have to pass both council and utility boards? Does something's gotta be the same in both?
It's the same, because right now, they are.
Somebody worked for the city.